I'd like to call to order the meeting for the Village Board for April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Can you please join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village clerk, would you please call the roll?
President D. Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Fran?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
That's five.
At this time, I would ask a member of the board to make a motion to deviate from the agenda in order to consider the items listed on the agenda under President's remarks, as well as the two thousand nineteen APWA Service Improvement Award presentation. Is there a motion to deviate from the agenda?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. So moving on to, we'll do the presentation first.
Yeah.
So let's begin with the two thousand nineteen America Public Works Service Improvement Award. I believe Public Works Director Joe Crouchy will be discussing the award. Mr. Crouchy, would you like to begin?
Sure, I'm over here. It's with great pleasure that I present tonight to our village president not one, but two different awards for the Senior Disabled Grass Cutting and Snow Removal Services Program. The American Public Works Association, APWA,'s two thousand nineteen Service Improvement Award was presented to the village at its suburban branch awards banquet back in early March. The suburban branch of APWA consists of public works professionals, which are municipalities, consultants, contractors, from all the collar communities around the city of Chicago, normally within DuPage and Cook County. Annually, this branch solicits applications for awards. The Service Improvement Award is given to the applicant that exhibits the best improvement or new service to their residents or their constituents. Shortly after being elected village president, village president D. Simone presented his vision to assist our senior and disabled community with cost share programs. Our Public Works Department accepted this challenge. We developed, implemented, and managed a senior grass, a senior and disabled grass cutting and snow removal program. The work included establishing criteria and guidelines, creating an application process, scheduling, advertising, and the ever-enjoyable customer interaction, customer service. This program would not be a success without the hard work of two individuals I'd like to recognize today, Administrative Assistant Ginny LaVerrata and our management analyst, Yvanna Dassich. These two ladies really were the heart and soul of the program, from scheduling the work to handling the invoicing, to the exceptional customer service that they experienced. They have truly been wonderful on this program, showed extraordinary patience with our senior and disabled community in making this program a success. So again, thank you. Upon acceptance of the suburban branch award, our program then competed with five other branches for the Chicago Metro Chapter Award. Not surprisingly, we came on top again. So we did accept that award at the chapter's banquet in late March. So where do we go from here? Now we compete against sixty-three other chapters throughout the nation, and hopefully we'll take home the award at the September APWA Conference in Seattle. So on behalf of the suburban branch, the Chicago Metro Chapter, and our team here, it's with great pleasure that I present these awards to President D. Simone for the APWA Service Award.
Let's get the public works staff up there, too. I do want to say, I think this is a perfect example of how staff and the board work together. The board comes up with an idea for a vision, for a goal that they want to see implemented. We hand it off to our public works professionals, and without missing a beat, this was implemented very quickly. I can't tell you how many calls from other village managers and city managers across the area who are now calling to replicate our program. So, great job, guys. You guys kind of set the bar pretty high for everyone, and let's keep it up.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for all the hard work. I know the first couple times and the snow fell was kind of rough on us, but we told everybody we were going to work through the process, we're going to fix the bugs. We did that, and I think every year, or every season, or how many seasons we're going to have in one year, we're going to get better on it, and it's going to go flawlessly. I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you so very much. So let's move on to a proclamation declaring April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen Arbor Day in the village of Benserville. Would Joe Crouchy please read the proclamation?
Sure, before I get to the proclamation, I just want to talk a little bit about Arbor Day. So each year, the village does participate in Arbor Day festivities. This year, we'll be holding a ceremony celebrating Arbor Day on Friday, April twenty-sixth. It'll be located at Huffman Park near the CVS store at ten o'clock in the morning. So we invite all of our residents out to enjoy that ceremony. Arbor Day was established back in eighteen seventy-two. J. Sterling Morton wanted to set aside a special day for planting of trees. To me, however, Arbor Day is a celebration of our entire forestry program. Tonight, I'd like to acknowledge the accomplishments of a few of our individuals, four individuals, two of them are here tonight with us, who've made a significant impact on our urban forest, as well as a general beautification of our village over the past eight years. So if I can ask our street and forestry supervisor, John Izuski, and one of our technicians, Jason Ackerman, to stand up next to the dais. That would be great, while I talk about some of your accomplishments. In two thousand twelve, the village board approved a comprehensive forestry management plan that created programs and opportunities that focused on revitalizing our urban forest. Earlier that year, we found out that we were basically infested with the Emerald Ashbore. So between two thousand twelve and two thousand sixteen, the village removed nearly twelve hundred ash trees from our parkway. Since that time, we've planted over fifteen hundred trees to replace them. So we're actually ahead of the game from where we started. These fifteen hundred trees consisted of one hundred and seventy-five different species. One of our goals was to diversify our forest so that we don't succumb to another impact like we did with the Emerald Ashbore. In two thousand eighteen, we actually began to establish our local village arboretum at Redmond Park. When completed, this arboretum will display nearly one hundred and twenty different species of trees found in our parkways. The arboretum will provide an educational opportunity for our residents and guests to learn about our trees in our parkway and the benefits that they provide. We're hoping to have this arboretum completed at the end of this year. The village has also created a number of annual maintenance programs as part of that plan. Our tree, our tree trimming program, annual tree trimming program allows us to trim each parkway tree in a four-year cycle. In the past, this was done maybe every ten or fifteen years. Our annual tree removal program provides funds to remove trees that are in poor condition so we get rid of some of our hazards in our, in our parkways. The village has also made a very significant investment in our beautification of open spaces. Our in-house staff, led by Jason, who possesses a horticultural degree and certification, have created ninety different landscape beds throughout the village. They're modified each year with new colors and new plantings. We've installed in landscape six entrance signs. We've revitalized Huffman Park, and we spruced up our downtown and our train station with new planters and new beds. All of these efforts have led to the village to its twenty-eighth year as a designated Tree City USA community. None of this would be possible without the continued support of our village board and the hard work from these guys. So I'd like to extend my gratitude and offer a job well done to these professionals. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and read the proclamation, Arbor Day proclamation for two thousand nineteen. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was the first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, cool the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource given, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuels for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our village increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy, of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the village will host an Arbor Day tree dedication ceremony on Friday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, at ten o'clock a.m. at Huffman Park near CVS. Now therefore I, Frank D. Simone, village president and the board of trustees, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, as Arbor Day in the village of Benserville, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees in our woodlands. And further, I encourage all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations within our community, dated the sixteenth day of April, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a motion to, in support of the proclamation? Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I believe Public Works Director Joe Crouchy would like to discuss the proclamation. No, you did that already, right? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Just reading it.
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the proclamation is approved. Moving on. Thank you, Joe.
I can just jump in real quick and just thank you guys for everything you do. This public work staff is a staff that I get calls randomly throughout the week of saying, hey Evan, we just drove by Huffman Park, can we revitalize it? I don't know of too many public employees that go out and find work for themselves, but you guys definitely embody that. So thank you so much for all your hard work. And as the old quote goes, you know, the best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago, the second best time is today. So you guys have really done a good job with that, and town looks great, and it's just going to look better over the next twenty years. Thank you.
Let's, let's have some more fun things, ready? Resolution granting the advice and consent to the president's reappointment of Karen Markot to serve another term on the Community Development Commission. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the resolution is now approved. Karen, would you join me up front, please?
I'm Karen Markot.
Karen Markot.
Having been appointed to the position of Commissioner of the Community Development Commission?
Having been appointed.
To the position of Commissioner.
To, appointed, having to be Commissioner, what?
To the position of Commissioner of the community.
I'm nervous.
Of the Community Development Commission.
Development Commission.
In the village of Benserville.
In the village of Benserville.
In the counties of DuPage and Cook.
The counties of DuPage and Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of commission.
The duties of commission.
Of the Community Development Commission.
Of the duties of Development Commission.
Of the village of Benserville.
The village of Benserville.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Thank you for continued service, Karen. We appreciate it.
A resolution appointing Robert Helmgren as a trustee to the Benserville Fire Protection District. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved, and I believe Mr. Helmgren is going to be sworn in at a later date.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
A resolution, number three, number five, is a resolution granting the advice and consent to the president's reappointment of William Belmonte Senior to the Board of Police Commission. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Mr. Belmonte, would you join me in the front, please?
I'll try to make this smooth. I, William Belmonte Senior.
I, William Belmonte Senior.
Have been appointed to the position.
I have been appointed to the position.
Of Commissioner.
Of Commissioner.
Of the Board of Police Commission.
Of the Board of the Police Commission.
In the village of Benserville.
In the village of Benserville.
In the counties of DuPage and Cook.
In the counties of DuPage and Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of commission of the Board of Police Commission.
Of, and, of the Board of the Police Commission.
Of the village of Benserville.
Of the village of Benserville.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we will move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. Do you have any public comment?
No.
There being no public comment, this will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen village board meeting?
You have a motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries and the minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of one million, six hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars, thirty-nine cents. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
You have a motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
You have a second?
Is there any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the warrant has now been approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. Moving on to Community and Economic Development Committee, a resolution to authorize the execution of a letter of intent to purchase one oh-one West Main Street, Benserville, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Evan?
Yeah, so this is the property the village owns at Main and Center in downtown Benserville. It's a vacant lot currently on the screen right there. The long-term goal for this property has always been to redevelop it as a mixed-use residential property with residential on top and commercial on the ground floor. We have a letter of intent which doesn't really bind the village's hands, it just gives an exclusive period for sixty days for Kara's Capital and Zen Wealth Capital to do due diligence on the property, test the market for any interest they may have. This actually works out really well with our timeline because we will have music in the park, in this park, throughout the summer, and they won't be starting construction perceived until the end of the year. So this works out well for us. Right now, it's just kind of do, lock it up for a little bit.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with L.A.R. Lawn and Ground Corp. for the two thousand nineteen Tall Grass Program. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, so this is, we open bids for contractors. This is for situations where tall grass exceeds eight inches, and we're not able to get the homeowner to cut the grass. We can have our contractor, L.A.R., go over to the house and cut the grass, it's an agreed upon price. Sometimes these lawns get pretty crazy, and they're overgrown, stuffing them, dog feces, that type of stuff. So it's dirty work, but it's what we do to help keep the village clean. L.A.R. is the low bid, and we recommend approval.
So any other questions? And we go after the homeowner for this.
Yes, so this all gets reimbursed by the homeowner that, or the property owner that caused the problem. If they don't pay, we lien the property, so the property won't transact until we're made whole.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number three is an ordinance approving three special use permits, motor vehicle sales, truck repair, and outdoor storage area, and a variance, outdoor storage area, location at eight seventy-seven Supreme Drive in Benserville. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'm going to hand this one off to Curtis. He did a lot of legwork on this one.
Yeah, so this is a, this is a project CIT Trucks already in the village. They're consolidating and expanding their sales, and we'll actually be doing some repair at the facility. This is the former Law Auto facility, so it actually works out very well for the CIT Trucks use. So those are the three special use permits, and the variance is because they will be parking the trucks for sale out in the front yard, which will require the variance.
This is good for us financially, as it will generate sales tax dollars, which fills the hole that when Law Auto left, we will be able to reconstitute that.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Ordinance, number four is an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow motor vehicle repair and/or service at eight twenty-eight Eagle Drive. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Again, I'll hand this off to Mr. Prosga.
So eight twenty-eight, eight twenty-eight Eagle Drive, the thing to know about this is it's an I-1, so it's a light industrial, so it backs up to residential. That's the special use required here. The, it is motor vehicle repair, it's a multi-tenant industrial building. There are several conditions in the approval that are looking to clean up the property and ensure that this building is up to code, so we're comfortable recommending approval on this one. But yes, again, special use permit for motor vehicle repair, mainly kind of small engine stuff, eight twenty-eight Eagle.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number five is an ordinance approving a variance to allow two additional drive-through signs at McDonald's located at three oh-two West Irving Park Road in Benserville. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
There's a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Prosga.
So McDonald's is updating their stores nationwide. The current signs in the drive-through, there's one per drive-through lane, there's two drive-through lanes, are, you have to manually change them, so you can see them in the picture there. So they're moving to digital build of signs, and there's actually a pre-menu board sign, and our ordinance only allows one menu board sign per lane, they're going to have two. So we're, the variance is for those pre-menu board signs.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the ordinance is passed. We do not have a report for finance for the police department. Number one is an ordinance of the village of Benserville, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois, amending chapter seven of the Title Five, of Title Five of the Benserville Village Code to regulate motor vehicle tow's authorized by the police department. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is one Chief Schultz's initiative to streamline tow operations so we can make sure that police officers are out on the street. All too often, we have police officers who are having to wait by wrecked vehicles or impounded vehicles for an hour at a time. This will allow him to select a tow company, use that tow company, they, there's a requirement that they're within thirty minutes, and it will get the police officers back on the street doing the job. Chief, do you have anything to add?
The, may I have a, is there any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the ordinance is now passed. Under Public Works, we have a resolution authorizing amendment number one and amendment number two to the Phase Two Design Engineering Services Agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated for the Church Road T.A.P. project from Grove Avenue to Illinois Route Nineteen, and then not to exceed amount of nineteen thousand, five hundred and seven dollars for revised agreement amount of one hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Joe? There being a motion, a second, any discussion?
Joe. So this is amendment number one and two. Amendment number one was actually done about nine months ago. We approved that administratively, but with amendment number two, we've exceeded our ten thousand dollar limits, we wanted to bring both of those back to the village board. Amendment number one in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars included some otoscope services associated with the culvert that goes through Huffman Park right there as part of this project. We needed to do some more work at the request of the Corps of Engineers, which required the engineers to do some additional work on their design. Amendment number two had to do with trying to meet our deadline of getting this on the April letting. We were having some issues with CVS and the final land transfer, so Civil Tech had to go through and actually do an alternate design at the last second for stopping the project just short of CVS. I'm glad to report that we don't have to do that. We were actually able to finalize the stuff with CVS and, but the extra work was done, and they deserved to get paid for that. So the total amount of both amendments is nineteen thousand, five hundred and seven dollars for a revised contract of one hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, and it's our recommendation to approve.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?[1485.54]